Good afternoon. This is a the August 3rd, 2022, meeting of the Planning Board with one agenda item to write a comment letter to Mass Housing on the Park Central 40B project. So how would you guys like to kick this off?
So I I did start just capturing what our objectives are and what sources of information we have to kind of defend the factual positions. So I guess through Zoom, we'll share the document, right? Is that what we'll do and just talk about it? Or do you want me to? How do you want to facilitate this? Madam Chairwoman?
Share the the application? Is that what you're thinking?
Or my notes, I was, we can take notes, or I'm not sure how you want to do this. Because I've I've kind of created a just bullets that we want to try to convey facts about. And then and then what is the support? What is it that we want to say? And what's the supportive sources that we can use to to, you know, defend the what we're trying to say? So that was kind of my approach. I don't know if you or Deb or Jesse started anything separately.
I took some notes too, but that sounds like a good approach to me.
Definitely.
So do you? Do you want? So you want me to share? Is that correct?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So Colleen, could you help me? Be able to share?
Oh, sure. I'm sorry.
No worries.
I just want to point out that we have currently five attendees in the public part in the public attendee list.
And if I have typos, forgive me because
You started something. Um. Is it worth noting just that a couple of us had gone to the site visit? And just to say, I don't know if anybody is Marnie and I did attend the site visit the other day, but we were not actually allowed on the site.
Yeah, that's that's an interesting way to do a site visit.
I mean, most attendees, you know, from various boards and committees left feeling like we maybe want to ask for it. They're not separate from creating this, but we may want to have another attempt to have a visit onto the site. And I just wanted to report that the man that was there from Mass Housing, his name was Mike Busby. And he said, if if we need more time to just, you know, all it takes is an email to say like, I need 15 more days or something like that. I don't know whether if we have requested more time, but he made it sound like he would prefer that our, you know, letters are comprehensive, include, you know, the public and input from the boards. And there's no problem to ask for an extra 15 days is what he said.
Hey, Deb?
Yeah.
So I'm just trying to understand what happened at the site visit. You arrived. You parked, like, where did you guys park?
Yeah, so we parked along the I don't know what's that the main road up there past the Red Roof Inn.
Park Central Drive.
Park Central Drive, yeah. And you know, there were representatives from, you know, the Park Central Project. It was Bob De Petri and the attorney. His last name is Panos.
Jason.
Jason Panos. And then there was a landscape architect and another person working with the project. I didn't get his name, but they had kind of a flip chart. And they, you know, we kind of, I think, thought that we would be starting a conversation there. And then we would take a walk into the the site. And actually, you know, somebody asked, you know, is it marked where the buildings would be or the corners marked? And I think the response was that the site was too, the path wasn't really suitable to walk on. It was too thick or something like that. And it and so we just really were maybe, I don't know, 20 feet or something from the entrance at the end there. Maybe it was 30 feet. I don't know. And they had like a flip chart, a paper flip chart where the attorney may mainly went kind of through things as like a presentation is what happened, Jesse.
So was was everybody from the town in that position of not being allowed on the site?
Yes, that's correct.
And were there people from the ZBA there as far as you could tell?
Yeah, so from the ZBA, the chair was there, Dave Williams. And and Craig Nicholson were there from ZBA. Marnie and I from planning from Select Board. It was Mr. Stivers, Lisa Braccio. And Andrew Dennington, Conservation, Ben Smith, Kevin Farrington. Historical Kevin Miller. Police, somebody from police, acting police chief Newell. Somebody from fire. I don't know his name.
Dano.
Dano.
Lieutenant Dano.
From fire. Nobody from the public was invited, I think. So was boards and committees. I think that's everybody. I might have missed. I, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Freddie from Open Space. And there was one other person. Housing, Shopsy maybe, or there's another woman, I think, standing next to you. So there's about 10 or 15 of us.
So so were you? Did you have a clear line of sight across the entire site, so to speak? Like, could you see?
No.
Could you see directly all the way across to the to the end of the area, so to speak?
No. So we walked up, I guess, to the end of Park Central Drive. It's gated off. There's a gate there. You know, and it was locked. I believe someone went over to unlock the gate. So we thought we were maybe starting a presentation and then we're going to do a little field trip and do some walking. Most of us had like hiking shoes. We're going to walk up there. But they said it was too too much brush and they hadn't cleared the lot enough for us to walk up there wouldn't be suitable. And so we literally were standing around under a shade tree. Some people weren't under a tree. It was very hot that day, but we couldn't see anything, Jesse. We could not see into the lot at all.
So that that strikes me as odd because I've done site visits as a planning board member before. And sometimes you're like just hiking through woods. In fact, often when I was doing things with Jennifer Bernie and Don Morris, we'd be like looking for markers where there was no path at all. So not kind of weird that, anyway, we all had it, sorry.
Yeah, you know, Ben Smith asked, you know, are the is the are the sites? Are there going to be markers where the buildings would be? That was his request. Like, when we go up there, we'll we'll be able to see where the buildings are going or planned. You know, marked in the corners. And I think we found out at that point, we wouldn't be walking up there. So you know, I mentioned to Mike Busby that we would be interested in a visit. You know, that we weren't able to do it that day, but we would, you know, I think everybody left thinking that they would like to go back for a visit.
And is that supposed to happen before our extension with Mass Housing for comment goes up or?
Yeah, no, I don't know what he said if he really answered my question, but I thought he wanted us to go directly to the proponent. I'm not sure if he answered my question.
And I think we should just ask for more time. One, because it's it's putting an awful lot of strain during a highly like vacation, college move in period. So I would prefer the 15 days regardless. And he said it's easy where he said they were going to be 90 to 100 days for review anyway. So now an additional 15 days is not a big deal. Mark Purple is supposed to be the one to inquire. Deb, I think you already did. We did already forward a request to extend to Mark Purple, but I think maybe we ask again to say, based on Mr. Busby's recommendation, we would like to take advantage of the 15 days.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Because I think there's a lot. There's a lot to I feel like this process will be kind of a big, let's put it all in a big bowl and then filter down to how exactly, you know, what is it that we want to mainly focus on?
Yeah.
It's very curious that there was a site walk without going on site. Do you know if the back in 2013 or whatever, if that site walk was on site?
Well, I did hear some, a few people mentioned that that was the last time that they'd been on the site.
The previous site.
Well, who? So I think some folks had been up there before.
Colleen, I still can't get on. It says host still is disabled my participant from screen sharing.
And Barney, what what if you just like email it out to us so we can just look at it on our own?
Oh, yeah, I could do that. Why don't I do that? No.
We have it now. It looks like Debbie, I gave it to Debbie instead. Sorry.
Oh.
Put you to work, Debbie.
I didn't even see it.
Barney, do you mind emailing that to me anyway?
Yep, hold on. I just have to do it separately. Just give me a second then.
Thanks.
Yep. So that's on town email and I just sent that.
Thank you.
So based on the bullets that I gathered from the other night, the I first wanted to discuss like convey facts regarding access egress, pedestrian safety, sidewalk access, vehicular safety, the use variance, and then concom. And those were kind of the major bullets that I captured. And I just didn't know if there were other bullets that any of you had come across that we would want to kind of substantiate or any other any other thoughts?
Well, Mr. Rose had an interesting point the other night that's kind of stuck in my mind that the state doesn't allow egress onto Route 9. And in my mind, it's for a good reason. It's like not even remotely possible to have traffic from that size project spilling out on Route 9 that close to the on ramp for 495. I guess that kind of ties into what you said, but Mr. Rose pointed out that it's a state regulation that prohibits egress onto Route 9, and yet it's the state that's imposing, you know, through another mass general law. I don't know.
I did actually ask Mr. Busby specifically about that question, and he basically said they're two separate agencies. His job is to just kind of look at the application and establish if kind of all the requirements that are required from a mass perspective that a lot of the egress access, if Mass Housing approves it, it really falls to your town's ZBA to be able to enforce that. So he said, you already have a development up here. So since there already is something existing and you're letting traffic come in and out of that onto Route 9, he he said it would be, you know, not for his department or his function to comment on. Okay, so so these are the points. I don't know if there's anything else that you guys had. And then so we can kind of just talk about detail that I had around access and egress.
Marnie, I had one thing and I'm confused. I was more confused after the site visit where we sat around, stood around. We had talked about the height and as being four, 48 feet, right? Four floors, 48 feet. But in the on the flip chart, we were shown a scenario where the attorney panel said that they would be using the topography for sort of a underground garage. And so Freddie Gillespie asked for some clarification that from one side, it looks like 48 feet, four story building as measured from the ground. But if each building has an underground garage on the other side, that's actually five stories. So the reason I think it's interesting is that we clarify that. But also, there was a concern mentioned, you know, that we don't have, well, first of all, how is it measured? Is it measured from the ground? Is it four stories or is it five stories? And do we have a ladder truck? That was asked specifically at our gathering. If the if there's a fire, the fire is on the side with the five stories. Does Southborough have a fire truck that can get to their top floor on the walkout garage side or the garage under the building site? So I feel like that needs to be clarified. To me, it's not clear in the packet. And also, it was you know, even more confusing, I would say, when we met.
And I will say, prior to the site visit, I called the Fire Department and spoke with Lieutenant Dano, who I subsequently met on site, and he told me that their fire truck clears 10 stories. And so it really depends on the way that the fire truck would be able to access the property. So the farther away, the lower it goes because of the height, obviously, with like a lever kind of perspective, the taller it is to the the closer it is to the building, the higher you can go. But as your access to the building goes out, it's it doesn't go as high. So they'll have to look at that. But they, I don't believe they commented it specifically, but I think that is a good point to raise. And they would absolutely, and there there were suggested variances that they would ask. They would have to have to ask a variance. It's 48 feet, four floors. Our regulations are 45 feet, three stories.
Right. Okay. Yeah, okay. So it's not that we wouldn't have a safety vehicle, because it sounds like we've got one that reaches. And I recall a couple of years ago at town meeting, the town funded a larger I, you know, custom fire truck vehicle to be able to reach high floors, et cetera. But in just keeping in mind, one of the things that they said was that the way that the parking was designed was around each of the buildings rather than a giant parking lot. And that was sort of to reduce the footprint or something like that is what they said. So I do think it's very much you know, maybe that's beneficial. The fire trucks could get in there. Or maybe it's not conducive for the truck to get in there. I think that's that could be a potential safety issue. I guess that's a question maybe for Karina. When you talk about the height of a building and there's sort of an underground garage, do you talk about the height of the building being at where it's livable space? Or if there's an underground garage that you can walk into, is it from there? Because I left feeling like 48 feet wasn't the the height of the building. If if every, if there are five stories.
Yeah, in Chapter 174-2, the zoning code is a definition for height. It's a pretty long paragraph. But it describes there that it's the vertical difference between the average or the mean finished ground elevation of all sides of the building or structure and the elevation of the highest point of the roof or flat roofs to the deck line of a mansored roof and to the mean height between eaves and ridge for gables, hip and gamble roofs. This definition shall not include signs in the structural features exempt by 174-15. Hereof and extending to more than 20 feet above the permanent permitted height. Building subject to site plan approval under 174-10. Hereof, the average finished ground elevation shall not be raised above the original national natural ground through fill or regrading to more than two feet above the centerline grade of the frontage street opposite the proposed building unless the approved site plan provide for such buildup. So it's quite a lengthy definition, but there is one which defines it.
Thank you. And just for the record, it is a flat. We were told it's a flat roof. It might be. Yeah, thank you.
So we have access egress, pedestrian safety, vehicular safety, resident safety, the use variance, concom. And then height, I think maybe this is maybe like dimensional.
Yeah.
Well, I guess that goes that goes back to resident safety, right? And what would you guys? How would you qualify the height issue? As more zoning? I mean, basically, the Mr. Busby basically said it really 40Bs can have liberty, could do what they kind of want to do.
I think it's a dimensional requirement.
Yeah.
Okay. And so that was it. And the only other thing that I, the only other thing that I wanted to call out is the I don't have a signed application, so I have a signed letter of intent, but I don't have a signed application from it's it's on section five of the financials. And so I just don't know if there is a signed. It's basically kind of under pains and penalties of perjury that the information above is accurate. So I'm assuming it's signed, but I don't know if we should call that out.
They required to provide a signed copy for the Mass Housing, right?
Yeah, I think we should get what Mass Housing has. Someone did ask, for example, about a butter's list. And the response was, well, we don't need that for Mass Housing, so we didn't provide it, but we'll provide it for a ZBA package. So in my mind, I said, well, okay, then we should have everything Mass Housing has. So if they have a signed copy, I'd like the signed copy.
Okay, so there actually is a signed copy under section 6.5, which is the same thing it looks like as under section
Oh, I missed that. Okay. And why would they put it in there and not sign it?
It's
Thank you. I missed that entirely.
In my thought, though I don't know how to verbalize this in a letter, is that he's come forward with a plan that was rejected the first time, like this is the worst case scenario that he's coming forward with again.
To the to, can you just clarify that point? So to the Mass Housing? Or what was originally proposed to ZBA after Mass Housing approval?
Well, so the the first iteration of this project, he proposed five three story buildings, I think, right on top of Terra and Bantry, which the town rejected and caused them to negotiate for that use variance.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So now he's coming back with apartment buildings right on top of Terra and Bantry where he started before.
Just more same same units, do you know?
It's now it's is it three, four story buildings? It's less higher, higher buildings, less number of
I think it's four buildings, but I thought it was five stories, if we include the parking garage, or do we include the parking garage?
Well, the height may be five stories, but it's considered four story buildings because it's four livable stories, but the height is probably five.
Okay. Um.
And if there's a desire to work with the town to get this done, I don't know why he would come forward with a plan that he knows the town will not accept. There'll be great debate over it.
Maybe somebody in the audience that is got their hand raised, Lincoln Mary Q.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, hi. I was at the meeting the other night. I don't know why my camera's not on, but I talked to somebody on Terra Road right after the meeting the other night, and one of was a resident from Terra Road. And he said what the builder did last time is the same tactic, which is propose the buildings right up close to Terra Road like he is this time.
Right.
Then he said to those people complained. And so he said, okay, I'll move them away from Terra Road and I'll put all the entrance, the entrance, only entrance on flag. If you guys agree to say that you're in favor of it.
Right.
Okay, so he may be doing the same tricky tactic again, which is like, you know, a big ugly building right next to a neighborhood. And then, oh, I'll back down. But he's actually backing down to what he wants in the first place. Okay, thanks. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And also, I noticed that he's misquoted the number of affordable units the town needs. He has 57. But if you go on MC, Mass Housing and Community Development, and look up the subsidized housing inventory for Southborough, it's 49.
He said 56?
57.
Oh, 57. And was that in the narrative, the upfront narrative?
Yeah.
Okay.
Under the development narrative, yeah, 1.4.
Mimi, do you know if the subsidized housing online was based on the 2010 census? Okay, so there's some information that we can sort of guesstimate. I think it is more around 50 something.
Well, except for he says he specifically notes the standard housing inventory on the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development. And it's the same percentage, 8.65 with from the 2010 census is what he references, but says the town is required to produce an additional 57. But based on that census, it's 49.
And Mimi, I'm sorry to do this to you and make this so painstaking. Where is that in the narrative?
It's under section 1.4, under the last paragraph, affordable housing. It's at the bottom.
Got it. Okay. Colleen, I'm going to be using your sticky notes and your highlighter.
You've got all the fancy stuff.
So I make sure I kind of tag all these places.
So just to be clear, a quick note on that subsidized housing inventory. Based on the current subsidized housing inventory we have, which is still based on the 2010 census, it appears that we would need about 46, 47 units to meet the 10% Units to meet the ten percent threshold. If it was based on a twenty ten, twenty twenty census, which. We're estimating right now, we don't have the number on about thirty seven hundred, thirty eight hundred. It would be about eighty, seventy nine or eighty units. Needed.
Right. So just to be clear, he references the twenty twenty, twenty ten census in the um. The S H I that's on the website. So those, I don't know where that number came from.
It might.
His fifty seven.
Okay.
Well, his fifty seven is not based on. What's on, what's online.
And what, again, that number was forty seven?
I thought it was forty nine because the um. What's online at D C H D says that we have three thousand four hundred and thirty-three units and two hundred and ninety-four. Subsidized. Affordable units.
That's close, but we received an updated subsidized inventory housing on um, April twenty fifth. And we now have two hundred and ninety-seven total units.
Oh, okay. So they haven't updated their own website then.
Yeah, I was looking at that this morning myself. So we're sending on, yeah, we were looking at it closer too, so.
So Karina, that's two ninety-seven on, excuse me, on the D H C D inventory?
Correct.
Okay, and then divided by what's the number of total units for the calculation?
So you want ten percent of your year-round housing units. So our year-round housing units based on twenty ten census. Is three thousand four hundred and thirty-three. So that would mean three hundred and forty-three point three units are needed to meet safe harbor. And we have two hundred and ninety-seven according to the D H C D.
So that's forty-six.
Right, forty-six point three.
So the two thousand twenty housing units per the twenty twenty census. Is thirty-seven sixty-three. So you can figure out what we're really needing.
Yeah, and that's based on us looking, you know, Colleen looked it up online, but that's not from the D H C D. Just to be clear, right? That's a, that's a census number that.
It's the census number of household, um, not housing units. There's a different number for households.
Right, and it has to include, so the D H C D, the reason they haven't updated to the twenty twenty census. Is because they're waiting for the seasonal, um, there's a category of homes that the federal. Um, level has not provided yet in the census. And it'll update.
It would be the seas, it's the seasonal ones, correct? So that probably won't affect Southborough all that much.
Although I think the point still is valid that he has cited the same thing. And the twenty twenty, twenty ten census, and he cites fifty-seven units. So the, the point is, is his math isn't incorrect. So if he's going to cite the right thing.
Either way, he's incorrect.
Right, he should be saying forty-six units, yep.
Or actually, not to split hairs, but it's four, maybe forty-seven would be the, because if we were. You know, point three short. Technically, we wouldn't be over ten percent.
They don't round up or down to a whole unit? How do you get a point three of a housing unit?
Right. That's why I would, you know. Air on the side of caution to go just more routed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would assume that they round up.
Yeah, our calculation, they don't provide that number of units required. We calculated and come up with the decimal point. So that's not D H C D.
Okay, um, is there anything else that other people um, identified that? We should include at least in the top bullets before we go in through like any detail?
Well, you have feasibility at the bottom. I mean, that's just as legitimate to me as anything else. We would, we would review feasibility on a project this size. Marnie, you had like your, you spelled it out actually very well with your bullet points all the way at the very bottom.
Oh, oh, the.
That is feasibility.
Yep.
Hey, anyway.
And I think our concern is we never saw any of these um.
No.
Addressed by the zoning board the last time.
Well, to be precise, from what I remember, the Mr. Bart Galini did his own. Feasibility study and presented it during the hearings. And there was not much, you know, room for discussion. So that, that to me, you know, based on how things have come, have, have concluded with those hearings. Brings into question, you know. What's really going on in terms of feasibility analysis with this project? And I would add, I, I don't know how we would approach this, but. And I, I don't want to start, you know, off on the wrong foot. With the Z B A, but I, I, I just wonder, you know, how do we? How do we pose questions, you know, within our town of, you know, just maybe ask. Will the Z B A, you know, it'd be nice if we had learned from some of the maybe, you know, perceived shortcomings of the previous process. Where in point of fact, it was the, the Z B A itself that did a lot of this kind of analysis. And it really wasn't up for discussion and it wasn't transparent. So I think transparency of feasibility analysis is, you know, something that we would strongly. Request and recommend this time around.
And, and remember that you can um, ask for a peer review on just about anything at the cost of the applicant.
Which, the only thing I remember that, that was done the last time was traffic, but.
Narrow.
That, that also was like. I, with how my, how do I put this? It was, it was done um. By uh, the proponents' choice of providers.
Yeah, you should be able to pick and, and, you know, he pays for it, but he doesn't pick who does it.
Right.
So didn't the traffic study guy peer review himself? Didn't he change?
You're kidding.
Well.
No.
No, she's right.
That, yeah.
Oh, my lord, was this a bad process?
Oh. Oh, my god.
I think what ended up, if I, I, I remember the butters had their own traffic uh.
They did.
Analysis, which was very different.
So I wanted to um, bring up, somebody had tried to get some clarification about the water. Um, in the plan, it talks about the pumping station um, that's outside of this project. And I don't know, maybe some, one of you guys can help me understand why is it outside of this project? Should be part of this project because it's needed. I think I, I was confused and maybe I just simply don't understand, but I. What I read was that it's not, and I think it was stated by the attorney that it's not part of this project. But in terms of talking about feasibility, I would think that it would need to be part of this project.
I did ask Mr. Busby if they had training, because I do think our, our zoning board has not had to go through any of this forty B. There could be some residual people that were on the first process. But I think that if there was some level of training or education, um, just to, you know, what they have, what is in their purview. Um, that they don't have to say yes to a forty B, that there's, um, you know, Mr. Busby said multiple times. Egress can shut this down. Um, it, there are things that the Z B A has within their um, purview. And I just feel like understanding that and having appreciation for, you know, how far do you push an envelope would be really important.
Listen, um, your uh, town council, Tallerman is um, well versed on this. He could give maybe a workshop for people that, so they can understand the forty B process better.
I, I think it would be helpful. I think it would be helpful for all the, like, although planning board isn't involved, I think it would be helpful for us to be involved. I think Concom should be involved. Um, I do think it would be just a really good thing for preparation. For, you know, what we, what we can feel comfortable doing. Um, how would that work? Just, I know this isn't part of this letter, but is that something we would just kind of put a letter out and request it? And or would we add, ask the other boards if they would want to take out, take it on?
You know, I would think through the process, you could, you could um, obviously speak as a board. It's not going to be before planning board by any means, but you could certainly direct Z B A to ask questions. That you would be concerned about as a board if it were in front of you.
Okay.
You have more experience in this, that's for sure.
I can tell you that in the past, um, when we had prior town council. That um, he provided workshops on various zoning issues, um. Maybe you must recall, right? It wasn't too long ago, um, maybe four years ago. Where he offered up, you know, for the planning board, like he had a couple of different sessions depending on the boards and when he could meet them. Um, that must come, it probably is a request to mark purple.
Yeah.
Um. So if, if we want to just kind of go through, I know you, um, I, I just sent this to everybody on the phone, um. The development has proposed direct access from Flag Road via Route Nine westbound and southward of Park Central Drive or gently winding roadway, which is also accessible from Blackthorn Drive. So this is what's stated, um, and I think the bullet points below, the town had taken a position to deny access to Flag Road. If the developer failed to meet resolutions with Mass D O T regarding access egress to and from Park Central. Uh, Mass D O T has denied egress from Park Central beyond existing infrastructure to Route Nine westbound. And residents of Blackthorn Drive entered a covenant which restricts use of access to emergency use only, whereby eliminating broad public secondary access and egress. Um, and then I've provided the source data. Um, so I don't know if there's anything else. That we'd want to include in some of those key points and the source data.
I just, um, one more thing, Marnie, I think you had asked, um. The question, I think it was you that asked the question about whether the future use of the site.
Oh, that was Freddie.
Freddie, okay, intended to be in a. Industrial park. Um, she, Freddie was asking and she asked several times because she didn't get an answer, as far as I can tell. Whether or not they would be using the same infrastructure that would be put into place, a road from, if it's. Connecting to Flag Road, would it be or, or up down Blackthorn? I think her question was whether or not that would be the same uh, for the forty B as for industrial. And I think what she was getting at is um, you know, that we would need to know that as part of this project. Um, I don't think I heard an answer. Did you, it wasn't clear.
Right. So Karina, is there a local bylaw that does not allow um. Commercial traffic to, to have that major access through uh, residential areas?
I think we do, don't we?
I thought we did.
I do too. I think we do too.
There are truck exclusions.
Like, it's certainly why it is the way it is if that, if that's there.
But would have to look into the um, current code, see if anything is in there specifically.
I think her also point to that was something around the exemptions that they would need to take for Concom. Relative to taking, putting up a forty B, taking certain exemptions. Um, that they, that would be afforded a forty B, but yet having roadway, the same roadway, roadway that you're taking exemptions for to forty B. Be accessible for industrial. And that's, that's the bigger issue.
That's right. I mean, I think the next step is to say if that's the case and it's intended to be for non forty B part of the project. Um, then it should follow Southborough bylaw. And not get the exemption. So I think she was trying to tease that out, but I don't believe she received an answer. It was very unclear. This is going to sound awful, but you could always ask for the uh, for Flag Road to be updated to current public road standards, which is next to impossible. I think the neighbors have taken the other tack that they, there's already a um. Uh, more an article passed last year, I think it, town meeting to request a truck exclusion. Uh, on Flag Road implying that there's too much traffic and there's traffic studies on Flag Road to show that.
That's actually one thing that I wanted to ask about Flag Road is we, we, there were two things. So in twenty sixteen, the same, the same meeting is the use variance. I recall there was a, put a gate up at Flag Road. And I don't remember if that got a vote. Um, there was, and I, Deb, I actually want to say you might have been the person that put it up. As a citizen's petition.
Yeah, I have it. It was, it was passed. It was a special town meeting. Um, I, I owe you that morning. I was going to get you the vote. Um, but it was a essentially a um. Uh, you know, if in the, if in the event of future um, development, that the uh, terminal end of Flag Road at Route Nine. Would be um. Uh.
Needed?
Would, would be, yeah, gated, I guess. So there'll be no access onto Flag Road, uh, no left turn from any future development. Onto Flag Road. And that did pass.
Except for emergency vehicles.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. It would be gated and we, e- exactly, just as if we have other examples of it in town, whatever type of gate. And I do remember even the police fire chiefs um, gave input into that um, warrant article as it was um, going through the. The, the various boards that, you know, we have other examples of gated roads like that in town. Um, and that was um, special town meeting. Two thousand sixteen, and I have a copy of the article. I forgot to send it to you, Marnie.
Oh, no problem.
I can send it around.
Yeah, that'll be helpful.
Yes, yeah.
And so the other thing that you just mentioned, the one uh, for truck exclusion, did that actually go to a vote?
Right, so that was a town meeting last year, and that proponent was Jonas Linden. Um, and he proposed uh, uh, annual town meeting twenty twenty-one. Under citizens petition to um, request that the select board. Uh, give Flag Road a truck exclu- request for Mass D O T, a truck exclusion for Flag Road.
And do you know if that actually um, went up to vote?
So that passed at town meeting.
I'll get that detail from Jim.
Yeah, yeah, it passed. And that started a, you know, kind of global look at truck exclusions in town. Where are they? Because. Longer story, but if you, you know, where would the trucks go? What would the route be, et cetera? But um, so no action has been taken on that yet, but there was a study done and the results are just available, et cetera. So the select board have not taken a decision yet on that.
And they never took a decision on the special town meeting one, as I recall, correct?
That's correct. They did decide, it was debated, um, and they decided um, to take a look. You know, some of the ancillary roads, if you close off Flag, for example, and there's, you know, trucks, are they going to go down other roads? And that would be unfair to those neighbors and ha- you know, I want to take a look at the ha- the circulation, how would the trucks get across town and. Et cetera. So it was um, uh, it was a sort of a larger, they called a global traffic. Study that was undertaken by V H B. And that report actually just became, the draft, or maybe it's a final report, just became available about like in the last week that I'm aware.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So it's interesting that this is coming in at this time, because I think, you know, I'm not sure if anyone was thinking about Park Central when that, you know, that was done. But that was really more for heavy commercial vehicle exemption. I think it's called H C D E or something like that. That's what, that was that. That was, that was for, uh, but it should be noted. Um, that the reason that the um, Mr. Linden put in the citizens petition. Was because there had been a traffic study on Flag Road. Um, and it did, based on the volume um, of trucks using the road. It did cross the threshold so that the road could be um. A candidate for truck exclusion. And that's why the select board took up. The matter, they took it seriously and it was voted at town meeting and they took it seriously.
Okay, so I will reach out to Jim Hagerty and get the. The, the count. Okay. Okay. So those are kind of my major bullet points around egress access. If anyone has any other comments. You'll, you can look at the source document separately, but I think.
You know, again, I, I don't mean to split hairs, but on your bullet point, Mass DOT denied it egress from Park Central, be honest, under Route Nine westbound, like maybe just working in there on the basis of traffic and safety concerns or something along those lines.
Um, this is kind of ancillary, but it's, some of us were watching this at the time that there was, there is a Route Nine corridor, 495 interchange group or something that had been kind of lobbying, I guess, to try to get a kind of access road or something. Along Route Nine that in a different configuration onto 495. Actually Carolyn Dykma and Jamie Eldridge, I believe, came to one of the select board meetings a number of years ago to tell us that they had put it up on the tip, which, you know, that means that it was going to be designed and studied. And just a number of us were looking at, I think, Mimi, I think it came up under the master plan meeting. And someone at the meeting, I think it was Bill Signs, looked online and that opportunity is no longer on, on the tip. So the tip is the something improvement plan. I don't remember what the T stands for, but it, it's what.
Transportation.
Oh, good. What Mass DOT would have been looking at and it, it just, it's, it would have been another avenue for the proponent to explore so that, you know, traffic trucks, et cetera, don't come onto scenic roadway. By the way, this is a scenic roadway and state designated. But, and so, you know, even I remember going to the townhouse and there were, there was outreach from Mass DOT letting us know when that project was going to be going through and they were taking, you know, comments from, you know, interested parties. So it seems like that's just not on the tip anymore. May, you know, bridges and other things that are crumbling have come up. So we don't see that right now. As of anyway, at master plan, when we were looking at it recently. So I guess what I'm saying is that doesn't, that doesn't appear to be a potential avenue as far as I can tell.
And I had cited in my thing, the 495 report. Where is it? The final report of the Department of Transportation. So they basically said, in this recommendation, like left turns from the new connect road would be prohibited to reduce traffic on Flag Road.
Yes, that's right.
So I pulled that. That was from 2013, and that's when there were all sorts of plans to read, you know, do these like flyarounds and everything, and those are no longer available. So.
That's right.
I tried to kind of put a lot of the facts and try to pull in a lot of the state evidence as well as some of the letters from our own select board. You know, to like the letter to MIPA where they basically said, you know, this is, this is going to be a problem. So I think if, if, if this is fine, I can take a shot at like consolidating, okay, how do we present this? And then what, how do we source the documents? And my guess is that instead of links, I'm going to have to actually provide that, the content. It might be a very long letter. So the extra 15 days, I think is going to be needed. Safety. So the one thing that I just wanted to say is on the application page seven to 24 under section, existing utilities and infrastructure, it requires a yes, no, and description. And the applicant has answered sidewalk access to site as yes and indicates Flag Road. Where is it? It is. What section is this? Let me just write the section down. It's the I guess it's under the property cards, 1.6 property record cards. It's the tail end of those. And so they answer sidewalk access to site, yes. Description Tara Road, Flag Road, and Blackthorn Road. I didn't know about Tara Road or Blackthorn Drive.
They, they, they're wider roads than Flag, but they don't have sidewalks. I, I just looked that up because they're doing road improvement projects in town and I happened to look those two up. One of them is on the list for road improvement. So I just, like two days ago, looked up and they don't have sidewalks. Plus I walk up there sometimes. They do not have sidewalks. So Blackthorn doesn't either. None, none of them do.
Okay. So I just think that's a mischaracterization.
That's a nice way of putting it.
And then I know they have to, I, we, we did ask, we did ask about the use variance at the site. And, and Jason Panos, the lawyer said, someone said, isn't really active? And he said, yes and no. So yes, because the use variance was never appealed. So by legal terms, yes, it is still active. No, because it is really indirect applicability to the original comprehensive permit filed for the 40A and 40B. And since they're not going after a 40A, 40B development, that ineffectually it is not active. So they, according to the application guidelines, had to say that it is still active in the application process. So that was his, his answer to that. So one, I think at least they acknowledged that it is not applicable for a 40B for this and kind of any of that. But I, I didn't really understand why they would put that a use variance. I didn't see anything specifically requesting like a yes, no. And then what it is, it was kind of part of the narrative.
Yeah. So if the, so you can't have it both ways. If the use variance is still in effect, you can't have access through Blackthorn. All those buildings can't be on top of Tara and Bantry. There needs to be 21 acres of open space deed protected. So this plan wouldn't work if the use variance was still active.
Yeah, I, we didn't get into the details. And, and I think it's a separate question still for the covenant versus the use variance, although the covenant was included as the use variance. I think we still need our town council to opine on the covenant that the, the Blackthorn Road neighbors signed to assess if it is still active based on the language of how it would be inactivated.
Yeah, I'll just add, I had never read or seen the covenant before, but we went online and it's listed as active online. We went to Worcester Registry of Deeds and just pulled it down. Now, maybe their website's not up to date, but it looks like it would need to be withdrawn if it were not active. So at least online, it appears active. Well, I think, I mean, you file things with the, it's just a filing cabinet. I don't, I don't think you unfiled. The use variance is there too. Okay. But, but, but they went hand in hand. I think the covenant was a condition of the use variance.
While it was, it still stands as a separate condition. And so that's where this is, I pulled the abandonment of the profit project, but specifically state the, it would only have to be agreement upon written notice to Butters, provided that no termination shall be effective unless and until the developer have relinquished all rights and all necessary permits and have issued for the project either component in a form satisfactory to Butters and withdrawn all pending applications for necessary permits for the project. So one would think that if this is active as a covenant freestanding, that this would deny their ability to access Blackthorn as a public road. But I'm not a lawyer. I just play one on TV.
I try to sometimes. Do we want to get, do we want to like get, I mean, for our letter, do we need town council to help us to identify whether that's a point?
I think we should. Because I think that strengthens the access egress component.
I agree.
So that was kind of all those points that I had around access egress. We just talked about the safety issue. I haven't pulled in a lot. I just pulled in kind of some of the pictures and some of the, the traffic study. And then I ran out of steam.
So we've been thinking about safety in terms of like to resident, to pedestrians, right, as well as vehicular safety, right? So two different kinds of safety.
Resident pub, I think pedestrian, resident of town central, Park Central itself, and then vehicular. So I think three safety components.
Okay, yeah. I think that's kind of an important. Just so as FYI, I mean, a while ago, many years ago, we had asked for a I guess it was, we asked for the police chief to give us a copy of any crash information or any anything on file having to do with acts, I guess it's an accident report at the, at Flag Road and Route Nine. I think, you know, if we're going to be factual, we probably, I mean, I don't know if we're going to get the acting police chief to help us on this safety part, but we know that there have been additional accidents. And in fact, there was an accident.
Yesterday.
Sumble and Farms yesterday. I didn't get the details, but that, that's correct. So we know there's at least one more. And I think it would be, you know, factual if we maybe ask police chief, acting police chief for the accident history at that intersection.
I remember there was something online where you could, oh, sorry, where you could ask, you could actually pull data.
Oh, really? Okay. I have one going, you know, as part of my files from way back, but I've not asked for it in five years.
And we have a hand raise, but I don't think we can access it because Colleen's not sitting here. So we can come out and.
You know, when I went on.
Oh, that's no longer up. Never mind.
Okay.
And then there are, there are various traffic studies, but they're old. Except for the one that was just done was, Deb, I don't know if you've had a chance to look at that, but is there someone, a way I can delegate a component of this for someone to pull the pedestrian and anything from the most recent traffic study that was done?
Yeah, sure. I'll, I'll take on something. Anything you need.
Maybe just review that most recent town study.
Yeah, happy to. Do you know what year that was, Marnie? I don't even know how to find this.
No, the one that you just said they did.
Oh, from like 2016 or something back then? I don't even know the date. I'll look.
The select board just did one, didn't they?
That you just mentioned.
Oh, that, yeah, that's really for trucks, but.
Oh, it's just for trucks. Oh, okay. Well, that can maybe go into vehicular, at least volume.
I'll, I'll take a look at it. Maybe there's trip counts and stuff in there as well. I was focused on some of their conclusions, but I can go back and take a look.
And then I'm going to say Lincoln Merrihue, when he attended our planning board meeting the other night, had asked specifically that we detail pedestrian versus vehicular safety. I know he's part of our attendees. I'm just wondering if, if you have any specific content, facts, or sources that you could point us to. Mr. Merrihue, you're on. Or maybe not.
I don't see him elevated.
He's in our, he's in our room.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, but we can't hear him.
About now.
Up, now it can.
Okay. So I don't have any like, you know, records of injuries or anything, but it may be noting in your report that most of the roads off of Flag Road, and we could come up with a count, are dead end streets. What that means is that anyone who wants to take a walk or a bike or anything else is going to come off those dead end streets onto Flag. It's the only source for like a long walk, let's say over a quarter mile for Tara, Bantry, Eastgate Farms, Red Gate Road, Hickory. You know, that whole strip of cul-de-sacs and actually, you know, a lot of Lover's Lane too. So part of the reason you have all the pedestrian traffic out there, which is runners and bikers and everything else, is it's the only road to walk on. Like all, there's no other way. You're not going to walk out to Route Nine and you're not going to walk on Route 30 probably. But for most of the people immediately in the area of Flag, Flag's the only choice. So that's why there's so much traffic. They don't have any other option. That's part one. Part two, it may also be worth noting that we've got two schools off of Deerfoot, which is Flag adjacent. And a lot of kids walk to school in the morning, and when they walk to school in the morning, that's rush hour. And if you have 200 new units with two cars per, that's 400 cars potentially trying to co-mingle with walkers and students. So there's kind of, those are the aspects I was trying to point out. There's just, there, there's not even an option for Flag adjacent. I live on Flag Road, so. And I run out here all the time, but I see pedestrians all the time because there's nowhere else to go. If you want one of the, I did find one other semi-related fact. I have a couple of old maps of South Borough. And Flag Road is on a map dating back to 1831. So this, this road is, you know, designed for one horse and a carriage at a time. You know, that's before cars were invented. And it's just, it's, the way I'm thinking about Flag Road now is like it's a big balloon and the more stuff we put into it, it's going to pop. And in my opinion, I'm trying to look for a visual to, but, yeah. So that, that was the nature of the pedestrian safety. It's just there's no other, no other pedestrian out there. No, there's no paths out. There are no sidewalks. There's not even shoulders on Flag Road. There's nowhere to be except in the road for all these people. And we could probably do a house count, you know, how many houses total are on all the cul-de-sacs that are, you know, off of Flag or something like that, but yeah, it's significant.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your, your additional clarification on that.
I'm writing my own letter. I'm going to write my own letter too. So I'm excited to listen to you guys. So whatever I write is going to be consistent.
Can you hear me?
Ross, is that you?
Yes, this is Ross Fulton. I'm at 42 Flag Road. I, I just wondered on, on safety, you've written pedestrians. If, if there's anything that should be included about bikes, as Lincoln just brought up, because a lot of people bike as well. And I don't know if if with widening the road, you would need bike lanes. You know, in addition to the sidewalks. That's all I can.
Thank you. Colleen, you indicated that like even to be come up, come up to today's standards. Are there standards that
Yes, there's.
That you cite?
Yeah, there, there's, they should be by the DPW, but yeah, there's certain road widths. All sorts of different standards for a public road and.
Oh, right. Yep.
You know, the town can be more strict. I don't know where it is though. That's a, that's a Karina question because I'm not as familiar with the bylaws here.
Oh, yeah. So we definitely have those types of standard. I was just wondering like in like, I guess every town has their own because Cambridge has certain standards. You have to have a bike lane. You have to, you know, so I didn't know if we, if there's something that we could at a higher level statewide that there are recommendations and then each, each town does its own thing.
Well, I'm not sure if, is the town part of, is it smart streets?
Complete streets.
Complete streets. That's one. Thank you, Mimi. Yeah. So that's, that's part of the grants. There's money out there to be had to add those things to the community, you know, bike lanes, sidewalks.
You know, bike lanes, sidewalks, things like that. So those are, I certainly look into it a little more.
And then beyond vehicular safety, I think we have the, some of the traffic studies that were done. I think the Butters did do a, a traffic study as well. And then resident safety, we cite the, the, the fire access and emergency access, basically. Sorry to make you all nauseous. Use variance. I think the use variance, I'm gonna put covenant. So that's maybe something, I don't know if Mr. Tallerman will be able to do this twenty-two plus fifteen days so that we can get it in. But I think that would be a useful evaluation for him. And then the final thing that I just did a little stuff on was Concom. And he neglects to mention that Concom denied the application. And he appealed it to the DEP, and over the five years, nothing has moved. So he, he implied that they were working together. So I just, I didn't know if we wanted to bring that up in our letter.
Yeah, I think just to, to mention, there's there's so many factual inaccuracies in the application.
I think that goes to the character of the applicant.
I don't think we'll mention that in the letter.
And let me just ask on that perspective. So I, I guess, you know, we've covered many of the main points. And I guess from a next steps perspective, there's a couple of ways you could kind of put this letter together. Of course, I don't even know if he'll read the letter. So is there a way that we want to kind of executive summary? Would you want it in, you know, I, I don't know what the best form of communication is. Is it a PowerPoint slide? Is it a Microsoft Word document? Is it word that we would traditionally submit our comments on?
I would think, I would think a word document.
Just, you know, and at the bottom, sincerely yours. Members of the planning board or something like that. Oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, it would go to the mass housing to Mr. Busby's attention.
Well, wouldn't we like CC the ZBA and the select board too?
So do, like, would you guys be comfortable with a draft where I kind of summarize the major issues? Kind of like what I have done here, like these are the kind of the key objectives that we're trying to go through. And maybe it's like the kind of the, I don't know if it's a table, like the, the, the point and the rationale. And then maybe have subsequent sections which he can go deeper dive into for each section. With, with source documents either linked or physically included into the document. And which would you prefer? Physically included into the document? Assume that he's not gonna press length.
That's what I would say. Marnie, I've also seen, you know, like I like the executive summary on the top, just in case somebody's not a reader. But of course, we hope that they're reading every word. But I've also seen a table, I don't know where it would go, but like a table of inaccuracies. And I do think it's important, like many of these things are based on inaccuracies. But I think we could come up with like a table, just like some of the stuff's just, we know is just not factually correct. And without going into like how, what's the implication of it? I wonder if we would just wanna say, we're just pointing out, says this, but this is the, you know, here's like why we think this is not factually correct. And with the correction. Could go at the end, could go in appendix, could go right at the beginning. I don't, I don't know how long it would be. So we've just, I think, covered the ones that we know of. But I, I think that would be kind of good to just go through that.
Yeah, I agree.
Correct the record.
And when I say source data included, included into the actual sections or as appendices. Everyone has different ways of doing things, so I just wanna make sure where, I don't mean to be nitpicky, but. Appendices.
I would say.
So now we just have to establish a process. So I don't, I know we've conversed and, and I, it's more about open meeting law. I know we've conversed, these are the general concepts and topics that we'll be incorporating into our letter. We may think, find things along the way. If we, we, if we share it as a letter to the team, that's considered an open meeting, correct? Or that's, that's, I, I guess I just need help on how we can iterate this letter. Or do we just assign two of us to iterate it?
It says to me like the two people would be the best and then bring it back.
Okay. And then the two people can do it offline, get it to a better point, and then present it to the, 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 the planning board.
At the same.
Recommendation. Okay. All right. So I'll definitely put my hand up as one writer. I don't know if anyone wants to join me.
I'll join you.
Awesome. Thanks, Mimi. So I think from my perspective, I, where I'm in a good place, I think we have some good content here to work with. And then kind of nuance, we don't have a lot of ti, I mean, we don't have a lot of time. I know, I don't know if people are taking vacations, but I, I'm taking a couple of days here and there. So Mimi, you and I can coordinate. And then maybe we think about the request to Mark Purple to extend. I would like to do that, just to, to have that time. Is that an official request?
Yeah, I think so.
Do we have to take a vote or anything like that?
I don't think we need a vote. That we all agree that, you know, consensus, we all agree, is that something we wanna do?
Agreed.
Yeah, that's, I think that's good enough.
So then maybe it'll be you and me, Mimi, and I'll just kind of offline connect with you. I'll take a first stab at it. And then throw it over the transfer, trans, transom, and you can kind of take a look at it, iterate. And then I think we just, our next meeting is the twenty-second. We've, we've already posted that agenda. Should we have an update on that letter? Cause then we'd have fifteen days after August twenty-second, right? So that would fall to finalize the letter before. And fifteen days, is it fifteen business days or fifteen days?
I think it's fifteen days.
Yeah, I think it's calendar days.
And so do we have a meeting on the fifth? No, that's, that's Labor Day.
September twelfth, I think, is it? After the twenty-second.
Okay, so we'll have to finalize that at that, not finalize. I don't know how we do that, but the twenty-second would be almost prime time.
Yeah.
We don't have another meeting.
September twelfth. That's too far.
Okay.
You can always call another meeting if, if you really, really need to.
Okay.
I now have internet up in New Hampshire, so I can even zoom from up there.
Excellent. So I, I mean, I think I'm pretty good. Do you wanna, I don't know, do we wanna ask if any of the attendees have any other points they wanna recommend that we consider for the letter?
Sure. Any, if anyone else has anything else with Mr. that like added, just raise your hand. I don't see anyone.
Okay.
A good input. In, Karina, do you wanna shoot a? So do we, do we go through Mark Purple for the extension? Or do we ask Mass Housing directly?
He stated at the, at our little onsite walkthrough that we didn't walk through to put it through Mark Purple.
Oh, okay. So Karina, do you wanna shoot him a, a request for an extension? Before your vacation starts?
If she can't, I will.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. So this, if we ask for fifteen days, it's on top of the deadline, which is August.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second. So that's puts us into September. Do you think we can also ask for a walkthrough? We just might see something while we're up there on our site visit, which I think is to Jesse's point, we probably should visit. Can, can we do both of those together and ask for a, let us?
Let us ask for anything you want. I mean, why not? The worst case scenario is you're right here where you were before.
It occurs to me that that actually belongs in the letter, that a proper site visit has not been allowed. I'm particularly, unfortunately, I couldn't make it to this, the quote unquote site visit the other day. But I hope that I could participate in the subsequent opportunity. And I would really be interested in seeing exactly what their points of egress are. You know, on the ground. Debbie and Marnie, since you were there, did they get into really granular? You know, illustrative discussions about the egress during the site visit?
Deb, I'll answer that really quickly. They did not. They kept letting us know that Jason Panos was the primary speaker. He let us know that he was all about peer review and all about working with communities and negotiating. And that they were, these are all very high level, you know, kind of fifty thousand foot plans, just what is required for mass housing. But they would provide much more detail when they actually apply through the zoning board of appeals for the comprehensive permit.
Okay.
I don't even think what they did qualifies as a site visit.
No, I wouldn't. Definition and says you get to go see, touch, and feel kind of thing. Determined suitability and a visit, a visit in an official capacity to examine a site to determine suitability for whatever.
I mean, given that the traffic and the egress is such a huge concern for the town. It does seem inappropriate not to allow a thorough inspection.
I think it's a requirement on their application for eligibility. That's why they had it there.
But interestingly, and Deb let me know, Mr. Busby, Bugs, now I feel like I'm calling him the wrong name. Mr. Busby was like, oh, no, 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 we don't need to go through that. We don't need to have that. We're fine right here. So he was very much confined with the, the way that they had proposed the, the site visit.
Yeah, but he had been up, up there before. Last site visit, so maybe he did not understand that we haven't, most people standing there had not been there.
You may have just not understood the situation.
Yeah. Colleen, where did you cite that from?
The site visit?
Yeah.
Comes right out of the free dictionary. I can look it up as far as, you know, mass.gov.
Yeah, I'm just gonna look through, I'm gonna scout us, you know, scour the, the application just to see if it is part of the comprehensive thing. Like if they define what it is.
Okay. So I'm, I'm looking in the the Department of Housing and Community Development Regulations now. That's, says as part of the review process that the agency shall conduct a site visit. Let me see if they define what a site visit is. I mean, anybody can go stand at the road. A site visit, you know, you're basically giving permission. We used to have closed site visits because maybe there was dangerous something rather, and the, and the owner of the property didn't want the public there. So, you know, but a site visit, you're supposed to have access to the. You should, you should be on the site. Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't define a site visit, but. I'll find something. Well, if not defined, then you use the, the dictionary definition. At the very least, it means on the site.
One would think. I mean, one thing, I know that, as I mentioned, Concom was interested to, you know, of course they'll look around for wetlands and they wanted to see the buildings. And, you know, they specifically mentioned the topography and using this topography for these underground garages. And in general, I guess, curiosity, I'd like to know, cause they're so, the buildings are so close to the residents. I mean, are they looking, you know, are the, are they looking at the, you know, with the residency at the top of their building? Or, or would they be looking up at a building? Or, I mean, I just wanted to, like, I couldn't, I just don't have a visual of what the land is like up there. And that also with the gate right there, cause it shows, you know, the plans that we have show the four buildings. That's, it, that's exactly as Jesse said, I really wanted to get right there and see. You know, but I think we should have the opportunity to see it before our letter goes in. So that's, sounds like a good plan.
Can I just ask one other question too? And it's way, way predates, predates my planning board. It's, this is maybe a Don Morris question. Did Flatley ever apply for a ZBA application for Park Central?
No, that's funny you bring that up. I, I'm thinking about putting in the call to Mr. Jenks to see what we can dig up. So I'm just gonna make a note, just he actually Phil, if I'm not mistaken, Phil was directly involved in that. So I will call.
Cool. I know I was involved with sitting in meetings. That's why I don't know. Surprise, surprise. All right.
Thanks for taking on all this work and getting us started. You did a great job.
Got a lot of good information there.
So I will, I'll take next stab and then get it over to Mimi. And then we will talk about it, I guess, update the agenda to have some discussion on it for the August twenty-second meeting.
Okay. And either Karina or Colleen will ask Mark Purple for an extension for mass housing and a site visit on the site.
Act with access to site.
Although I will say I came, I walked away with at least seven mosquito bites, just standing there. Thank you very much, everybody, for finding time and for the, the public that attended. Really appreciate the, the the support. And I guess we're on to step two.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, Colleen, for your desk.
Anytime.
What, what, motion to return? This is a.
Oh, that's right.
I'll make the motion to return.
And is there a second?
Second.
So I have a motion and a second and a discussion. All in favor, Latrell, yes?
Stein, yes.
Oh, Julian, yes.
Jemiria, yes.
Thank you, thank you, Jesse.
Thanks.
Keeping, keeping me honest.
Thank you, everybody.